On the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, so if we all stand. We have the role, starting at the end down there.
Fine.
Richard Frankenbaum.
Mr. Bass.
Make your news. Commissioner Sockstad. We have a forum, we're missing Commissioner Coach. At least for the moment. Um, clearly, we have no changes in the agenda, unfortunately. Um, and no announcement, I take it. I do, no. Uh, looking to the consent agenda, that's the, uh, that's approval of the August thirtieth, twenty twenty-two and September sixth, twenty twenty-two minutes. Any objections? Hearing none, um. Those items are approved. And we'll go to the, uh. Public hearing item and we'll, uh, open public hearing and, uh, we want to reopen the staff report, does that take a motion, Jerry?
No, and you can go as a chair, because we're gonna open up for staff.
Uh, yeah, we're gonna open, uh, this hearing up for our staff comments.
Stop, just stop presentation.
Staff, okay. Laura.
Yeah, well, uh, Jason Johnson, modern planning, um, I've been doing floodplain with the county since about twenty sixteen, uh, most of the floodplain permitting and whatnot, I've seen where a couple weeks ago that there were some proposed changes to the comprehensive plan in regard to floodway development. And so I came in today so that we could discuss the, the implications of those proposed change, changes. Um, I understand there's a proposal to amend the comp plan to prohibit development in floodway. Uh, the language, as I understand it, which was proposed on the sixth of September, is in bold there on the screen, which is that residential, commercial, or industrial development within the floodway will be prohibited. Um, that's the proposed language, and then this presentation was put together so that we can discuss the effects of this action, should it go in. So the first thing I'd like to discuss is, uh, something that predates most of the folks here. Um, this case was just being cleaned up when I started with the county back in twenty sixteen. Um, this is the Stoby case, uh, started in two thousand and nine. Um, and ultimately, the way this got resolved is the county had to apply for two different grants. Um, with all the associated code enforcement issues that happened in between that, it, it, as of twenty fourteen, uh, it took twenty fifteen to get us resolved. Um, ultimately, the property had to be demolished, we had to demolish unoccupied, single-family residents. Um, because we had no way to permit it, we had, uh, prohibited floodway development in the county. And just like what we're proposing, and so the fact that the project was properly permitted left, basically only one option, which is that the home had to be removed. And, uh, the home was removed, and it was ruined at considerable expense to the county. Total cost for the project, that was six hundred and seventy thousand dollars in twenty fourteen dollars. Uh, including almost a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar cash outlay for Bonner County to resolve this issue, as well as forty thousand dollars in labor, and of course, that's all twenty fourteen dollars. I went ahead and used the, uh, CPI adjusted dollar tool available at Bureau of Labor Statistics. Um, basically, this project in, in today's dollars was well over a billion dollars, all told, is what actually ended up costing. Um, this was the Stoby property in twenty fourteen, you can see the house there, there on the southern portion of the property. And this is the property in its entirety today, and here's assumed where the house would have been. It's gone, the house is gone, the driveway is gone, uh, this was a six or seven year project to get this removed. Had we had a process in place to permit it, this wouldn't have been necessary. Um, but because we chose to prohibit flood, and that's a choice that we make, that's not required by federal law, because the county made the choice to prohibit floodway development when this development was discovered. This, this was basically the option that we came down with, we had to remove the property. Um, since the Stoby case occurred, this was not a one-time incident, the county has had another issue of unpermitted floodway development. Um, you haven't heard about this, and commissioners have only heard about it a little. The reason why you haven't heard about this is because we had a path forward, we didn't prohibit floodway development. We managed to internally resolve and permit this case, there was no demolition that was required. Uh, the county incurred no additional costs beyond those of a normal enforcement case, labor, building maintenance, et cetera. Um. If floodway development is prohibited as proposed, it will only be a matter of time until we have another Stoby case. Um, and the county, if, if we go forward with this, with this, needs to be prepared for the financial, political, and human costs of forcing the demolition of existing structures. And this is eventually and inevitably going to include the demolition of a single-family home that is occupied probably more than once. And it's gonna keep going until we go back to allowing floodway development the way we do now. Um. Variances are probably not going to be an option, but variances exist in flood code, they are nothing like regular variances at all. Uh, FEMA Region Ten representatives have stated repeatedly that should Bonner County consider a floodplain variance for any reason, that it should be anticipated that the Idaho State Floodplain Coordinator and FEMA Region Ten Representatives will get the hearing to argue against the variance approval. And should we approve a variance in violation of our flood codes, FEMA Region Ten has said they will begin the process to remove Bonner County from the National Flood Insurance Program. I don't know if you choose to believe that or not, that's what's been told to me, it's been told to me by FEMA Region Ten representatives on multiple occasions. I don't know if they're true or not, but that's what they've said. A flood variance is an eleven-part test, and in order to be approved, that variance has to meet all eleven of those standards. Since two thousand and sixteen, we have processed exactly one floodplain variance. The only reason it was allowed was to resolve a floodway code violation where an existing RV structure was demolished, an open shell, pool, roof cover, and replaced without permits with a larger structure. To resolve this, we were allowed to grant floodplain variance to replace the structure with the exact, what used to be there before, the same number of posts, the exact same dimensions, the exact same dimensions on every post supporting the roof. And they had to prove that they had done the exact thing they did before, and that was the only way it got approved. There have been no other flood variances since then. Code of Federal Regulations, Title Forty-four, in which our flood code is based, does allow for floodway development. Um, the county will not be able to grant floodway variances based on this because, uh, FEMA Region Ten and the State Floodplain Coordinator have made very clear that if we adopted, we own it. Um, it's like going into a nice store and knocking something off the shelf, you break it, you buy it. Um, if we choose to prohibit floodway development, we will be expected to enforce the higher standard code that we have chosen to adopt. Um, saying that we're going to grant this variance because it's consistent with CFR Title Forty-four is unlikely to work. Um, unless FEMA Region Ten isn't serious when they say that they are gonna remove us if we do it, I don't know. So development has been prohibited, and it's worth noting what development is. Development is basically anything that people can do in a floodplain. It's any man-made change to approved or unimproved real estate, this includes, but is not limited to buildings, other structures, mining, dredging, filling, grading, paving, excavation, drilling operations, storage of equipment, or materials, this definition is an NFIP requirement from CFR Title Forty-four, this definition is required for us to be in the National Flood Insurance Program. It's not a definition that we chose to adopt, and it's not a definition that we have an option to change unless we want to leave the, the National Flood Insurance Program. So ban on floodway development will ban the repair, reconstruction, additions to, and modifications of existing structures. A ban on floodway development means that existing floodway structures are simply gonna have to sit and rot. You cannot change them because unless you can honestly train a beaver to improve your, your house, if a person does it, it's prohibited, because this is the definition of developments. So floodway development was, uh, prohibited prior to June second, twenty seventeen, the current flood code was adopted June second, well, came into effect, sorry, it wasn't adopted, came into effect, June second, twenty seventeen. Um, and floodway development was prohibited prior to this date. The issue with banning floodway development is that, in addition to creating a huge problem, it's also solving a problem that doesn't exist. We've had exactly one application for residential development in the floodway in the past five years. Um, it was one single-family home and one storage barn on one single park. Uh, took them about two and a half years to get through the process. They actually did do it, it's the first time in Bonner County that an MT-two, uh, map change has ever been approved. An MT-two form, they call it an application, but it's actually fifty pages of engineering instructions on how to do the application. Um, when I ended up talking to the engineer who worked on the project, he said the only way they actually got it done was that he had to coordinate with FEMA engineers from Region Ten and FEMA contract engineers who actually did the map. So all three of them could discuss the process on how they were actually going to do this map revision, because they literally, no, no one who worked on this project had ever even done one before. And they had to invent the process as they went along, all three engineering staffs working in concert, but they did actually get it approved. Um, it's the only time it's ever been done. So another issue with banning floodway development is that we're solving a problem that doesn't exist, and honestly, creating a bunch of new problems in the aside. CFR Title Forty-four allows floodway development because it is possible to reasonably safely develop in the floodway. It is not cheap, and it is not easy. It is extremely difficult. It is time-consuming, it is costly. Um, the, the no-rise analysis alone, plan on a twenty, thirty thousand dollar engineering bill just to start. That's not the engineering for the building or the fill, that's just to, to redo the maps to develop in the floodway. Our current flood damage prevention ordinance already has ample requirements to ensure that development in the floodway is reasonably safe from flooding. That's why the federal government will still underwrite insurance for properly constructed structures in the floodway. Um. If, if, if CFR Title Forty-four wasn't satisfied by our flood code, we wouldn't be in the NFIP right now. There are also a lot more effective ways to improve flood safety in Bonner County, other than this. Um, there's a few suggestions out there, and these are just suggestions, just to show that there are options that can be looked at. These aren't recommendations from staff necessarily, but there are things that could definitely be looked at that would make a much greater, big-picture county-wide improvement to flood safety over time. We have almost no development in the floodway. Um, prohibiting it might prohibit one project over the next five years, two projects over the next decade, this is not gonna significantly improve flood safety county-wide. Uh, we could increase the freeboard, which is the amount of elevation that we require on the first finished floor above the FEMA designated base flood elevation. The freeboard in Bonner County has been one foot for a very long time, I don't know when it came in, at early two thousands it must have been, because it was also in our last flood code. Just to the southwest in Cootin County, the freeboard elevation is three feet. Not one foot. There's nothing to stop us from adopting that. Um, we could get creative if we wanted to, and we could adopt a one and a half foot freeboard. It would be somewhat of an increase in flood safety, but for insurance purposes, uh, insurers take freeboard and they round up, so for insurance purposes, people would get a two-foot discount for one and a half feet of freeboard. We could do things, there are things that we can talk about. Um, we could change our substantial improvement thresholds. Um, substantial improvement is basically FEMA is very interested in people putting more wealth into the floodplain. And so if you make a proposal to improve a structure, greater than fifty percent of the value of the structure, that's considered to be a substantial improvement. A million-dollar structure, you put four hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars into it, not a substantial improvement, you put five oh one, that's a substantial improvement. If you hit that substantial improvement threshold, what happens then is you have to improve the entire structure as though it was new to accommodate all current flood codes. If that means you have to raise your building, that means you have to raise your building, you do whatever is necessary. So a lot of people will make sure that they stay under that fifty percent threshold, so they don't have to do that. We can talk about changing those thresholds to discourage people putting additional wealth into the floodplain. There's also no rule that says we can't add buffers or setbacks to the map special flood hazard area. There are some jurisdictions that choose to do that, to push people further out of the floodplain and give an added margin of safety. Again, these are just things that we can look at, other than banning floodway development that would change all floodplain development throughout the county. Because most of our floodplain is not actually floodway, and the vast majority of our floodplain development is not occurring floodway. Uh, none of these, of course, are recommendations, and each one of those, I think, deserves its own discussion on the pros and cons, the pluses and minuses. I just wanted to put this up here so that we can see that there are other paths that we can take if, if the commission is looking to, to improve flood safety in the county. If it's desired to adopt a new goal into the comp plan, um, I personally would recommend this language here. That Bonner County will adopt and enforce regulations to minimize flood hazards and protect human life, health, and property within the FEMA map special flood hazard area. This is basically straight from the purpose section of our currently adopted code. I think this alone is sufficient. If the commission desires to adopt something more robust, I would say this is a secondary option. This language isn't new or novel, it's pulled straight out of our flood code. But it gives that same goal that I just read before. It gives several objectives on reducing flood damage. Uh, a policy that just says we're gonna enforce our ordinance, consistent with our own requirements and those of Title Forty-four. Um. So there are, are a couple of options that we could go through if we wanted to adopt goals that address floodplain development. I think adopting the goal in and of itself and letting the code do its thing is probably gonna be adequate. But I, I wanted to give a couple of options there in case, in case folks wanted to see more. So again, we're gonna have to enforce our code as it is written. Um, but I, the, the problem with that is as written, I'm not certain what happens if our comprehensive plan contradicts our code. The Bonner County Comprehensive Plan does not fully control Title Fourteen, our flood code. Title Fourteen is ultimately controlled by CFR Title Forty-four and our participation of the National Flood Insurance Program. We can add to it, but we can't, I don't know if we can take away with it. Our code allows floodway developments, if our comp plan doesn't, I'm not clear what the legal ramifications of that are. Um, I'm especially not clear what would happen if we prohibited floodway development. The code still allows for it. And then we get an appeal on it. I don't know if the comp plan is gonna stand up on that. Um, I would think that the zoning code would likely control, because the zoning code is the detail level, ground-level regulation, I don't know that, uh, adopting a comp plan goal even actually serves to prohibit floodway development. I think we have to follow our code as written until it gets changed. So in summary and conclusion, um, if we prohibit floodway development, it eventually is gonna result in another Stoby case. Um, if we're gonna do it, the county needs to prepare for the financial, political, and human costs that's gonna be coming from forcing the demolition of existing structures. This will inevitably include the demolition of occupied homes, uh, that more current case that I worked on, that's more recent than Stoby, was also an occupied, single-family residence. Um, and it involved additions to the residence that would have been significant, it was part of the actual living space of the home, it was part of the second floor, you would have had to go in cut out a significant portion of the second floor and simply remove it off the house, in addition to demolishing a carport. Um, so it's either gonna be the demolition of occupied homes or the demolition of parts of occupied homes. Um. Like, like I said, you saw the budget there, it was over a million dollars last time this happened, in, in twenty twenty-two dollars. Grants for this were fortunately received last time, so the expenses were only around two hundred thousand dollars for the county. But grants for this are not guaranteed, grant funding is limited. Um, and honestly, if, if the problems keep on happening in the county, maybe that's not gonna be so favorable in our grant application. The next time FEMA looks at it, they may ask why we're still allowing this sort of thing to happen. We can't grant variances without jeopardizing or standing in the NFIP. Floodway development is a problem that doesn't exist, I can't tell you how often it is, because I only have one example, and I can't give you a statistical probability with a sample size of one, it's just, at this point, floodway development in the county is a statistical anomaly. It's just not a problem, and we don't have to manage it, floodway development is so difficult, and it's not that we don't get inquiries for it. Four ninety-five River Lake Drive. I know that, I, I know that property, because it goes up for sale every so often, and it's deep in the floodway. Um, it goes up for sale, and I get a lot of inquiries on it, probably two or three rounds, and every time I talk to folks about it, uh, well, it never seems to sell. So, once, once I explain to folks what floodway development actually is, they generally come up with alternatives for what it is that they would like to achieve, and they don't pursue actual floodway development. It will ban the repair, reconstruction, addition to, and modification of existing structures. There's no way to maintain structures, there's no way to repair them, if we, if we adopt a blanket ban. Our current ordinance does a really good job already of assuring that any development in the floodway is already reasonably safe from flooding, it's not easy to do, and it takes a lot of engineering. There are more effective methods that will be a lot less adversely effective, both to departments and, and to Bonner County residents that we can adopt. And it's not clear that if we ban floodway development in the comp plan, that it's actually even gonna be enforceable under NFIP requirements. Um, because of this, staff recommends that developments in floodways, Bonner County should not be prohibited. Um, that is my presentation, are there any questions?
Yeah, I have a few. Um. You seem to use floodplain and floodway kind of interchangeably.
No, they're very different places.
Well, that's what we thought. We thought that floodway was, uh, entirely different animal than a floodplain, but you seem to use them kind of interchangeably.
So, the technical term is SFHA, Special Flood Hazard Area. That is the proper noun, all capital letters, that encompasses the floodway and the flood fringe. The flood fringe is where the vast majority of our development happens, it's an A or AE floodplain, it's not a floodway. Um, but, yeah, floodplain generally is a colloquial term that people use, when I, when I, when I do stuff in writing, I very rarely will say floodway in writing, I might say it when I'm speaking, but in writing, I will say SFHA every time, Special Flood Hazard Area, so we're all really clear. So yes, the floodway is inside of the Special Flood Hazard Area.
So we, we were under, I was under the impression that, uh, FEMA, it was FEMA's position that floodway development should be prohibited.
In the CRS, maybe, in the community rating system, FEMA has a lot of opinions, FEMA would like us to have a building. FEMA has recently released a publication on how they're gonna help encourage every jurisdiction in the country to adopt a building code, tend to adopt the latest building notes, I've got that sitting on my desk. FEMA has a lot of opinions about what they'd like to see, yeah, they'd like to see that, they would, but if we do that, there's gonna be those ramifications, so we don't get any credit for it.
Jason, could you pull up the map and, and kind of walk through the difference there? I mean, you're using a lot of words that all make sense to you, but maybe we rather just illustrate it so we're all on the same page.
Am, am I correct in understanding that, that those two cases you talked about, the Stoby and the other ones, arose because people wanted to improve an existing structure?
The Stoby case was new, and the other case was an improvement.
It was a new home?
Mm-hmm.
So, how did it get built? My question, in, in the face of a prohibition on building, how did it get built?
It got built because we permitted it. And then FEMA looked at what we did and said, uh-uh. And they've done that before, they, FEMA can, will, and has come in and forced us to redo permits. Forty-four of them at the last count, we had to redo the permit. And everybody that didn't redo their permit now has a notice to title on their property, we resolved about half of them, and about half of those folks now have a notice to title.
So it just seems to me that, I mean, I, it seems to me, if that's the case, then the county shouldn't be approving anything in the floodway.
Yeah.
I mean, it just seems like that's, you know, you're, you're gonna get either FEMA's gonna come down on the homeowner or the county. Or, what, if, if you're in a floodway, I, what I understand is the floodway is sort of the main channel kind of thing. Uh, if that's the case, um, if, 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 if the county approves something that FEMA has recommended, if not established, it should be prohibited, there's gonna be liability on the county there.
No, FEMA has absolutely not prohibited development in the floodway. And there are communities in this country where about half the community is floodway, and where substantial
Floodway, not floodplain.
In the floodway, where substantial portion of the community are built and continue to be developed in the floodway. FEMA has a lot of recommendations, but FEMA absolutely will not come down on a county for enforcing their own code. And if our code was out of compliance, I assure you, it was developed in concert close cooperation with our State Floodplain Coordinator, she approved every word in that, in that current code, yes. And there are lots of communities where a substantial portion of development occurs within the floodway. So, um, along River Road here, um, I'm not sharing my screen. I'm sharing the window. How do I share a screen instead of a window?
You have to stop sharing, or should we?
Okay, so the floodway is the area in pink, and the floodplain or the flood fringe is the area in blue. And the combination of the blue and the pink together is that legal term SFHA, Special Flood Hazard Area. The entire pink and the entire blue.
And Jason, is that strictly elevation-driven?
Absolutely not. It is driven by, is driven by, uh, FEMA, and then they made a map, and then Congress said that's the map, and there you go. I will say that we have some of the best maps in the country, there are a lot of places in, in this state and in Washington working with flood hazard boundary maps from the, uh, eighties. There are actually two maps, they're paper, there is, uh, lines, and that's it, there is no aerial photo. There's a crude scale and a couple of landmarks, and then you get to measure off of that and try to figure out where everything is. In comparison to that, our flood maps are fantastic.
So the original language of that particular, I think it's, it's not a goal, I think it's a policy. I don't have it, but uh, was that, uh, development in floodway should be discouraged. Have a problem with that?
No. I've, development's already discouraged, when you get the engineering bill, it'll be discouraged.
Yeah, but it seems to me the county shouldn't, shouldn't approve it in the first place, but, um, whatever.
Yeah, sometimes I'm struggling, I just, I, just my intellectual curiosity is forcing me to understand, how, how did they get a permit to build a, a new home when it was prohibited, was that a permit that, a building location permit was issued essentially in error?
I believe so, but this case started in two thousand and nine, that I'm aware of, and I started with the county in twenty sixteen. And nobody currently working there was here at the time.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the issue, and somebody, the mistake was made, the house got built, then it was discovered later on, and long, long chain events happened later on, and you had to demolish the house, so.
That was that particular case, the later case was just a case of flat-out unpermitted development. They just built.
And it's also the case, meaning what if I
Yeah, I understand that issue, and I can't speak for everybody sitting at this table, but in my own mind, when we talked about that policy, I wasn't thinking about remodels, I was thinking new development.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't know if there's, you know, a way around that, but I, I wasn't, I wasn't saying people shouldn't be able to remodel the home or whatever, I was saying, don't build a new home there, was what I, what I thought we were trying to accomplish. So, as, that said, I mean, everything you say in the presentation makes a lot of sense, but, um, and uh, probably the most compelling thing to me, maybe, it really hasn't been a problem. So.
I think the bigger problem is this. When I only look at a worst-case scenario, Jason gets hit by a train or a bus, right? So we get a new guy in here, what regulations does he have to fall back on, do we run into a similar scenario where we end up with this significant financial impact in the last five, six, seven years to regulate on? Um, I, I think he has a pretty compelling argument to, you know, more or less leave it, leave it permissible, and here's the path on how to permit it. How often are we gonna have it? Really rare, right, I mean, a couple of cases in a dozen years. I don't think it's, it's a systemic problem, I don't foresee it ever being so.
So how much development is there now in the county in the pink area?
Very little.
Well, I mean, very little, what, how, like, one, two?
If we have the ability to track that, we can still be in the community rating system. And that was one of the reasons we got out, because we have nowhere close to the staff ability to track all that development, the floodway. FEMA does in the CRS, they want us to track every structure, every piece of development. They want, uh, an estimate of the total value that's in Special Flood Hazard Area, the number of structures, residences, accessory structures. Yeah, and that's why communities that do it successfully have a full-time person called a CRS coordinator who does that, we don't have the ability to track that. But I can say that there's very little, because we very, very rarely see a permit or any work there.
So, one, one that I think, if you travel Highway Two, and you, you see it, just east of McLean, down there off of Thistle Down area, there's that whole flat area that historically had not had anything but hayfields on it. Now it's a subdivision, and billion-dollar homes being down there with one giant horse barn or something. Um, it's on the, yeah, it's on the, uh, the, the northern side of the river. Um, Highway Two, not too many. That's too many.
Well, I'm saying, I, I believe that the majority of our, uh, flood, floodway development is actually in the park or a Is actually in the park work area. This is where I get a lot of calls from. Here's North River Lake Drive right here.
Yeah, yeah, that's the airport area, yeah.
And there's four nine five right there.
Man, that's, that's a, that's a high bank too. That's weird. So if you would, could you go over to the La Clean area on the pond river, uh highway two, just east of La Clean? Sorry, there. Now that's, that's, that's supposed to go rest over the. Well, it's a case too, because Dover's all. Right there. And by La Clean.
So along the pond array, we currently have no designated floodway except when you get close to the dams at either end.
So it's just maybe in the flood plain here.
Yeah, until you get close to the dams at either end, the entire pond array of river has no designated floodways.
No floodways, we're back to the floodway floodplaining. Well, my suggestion, so we don't. Spend too much time on this. It's just change prohibited to discourage like we had to begin with. Yeah. Cause I was under the impression that FEMA had the ability and and was. Did prohibited. And I had to be a bit of an impression, but insurance program, but. But as we're wrong, we change it to discourage.
So here's, here's my thoughts is that. Raising the free board means that it, it might cost more go there.
The big, yes, the big implication is, is when you raise the free board and then work that in substantial improvement. You got a house, it was built in twenty nineteen, entirely up to current flood code. They come in in twenty twenty-five, we raised the free board to three feet, proposed fifty-five percent improvement cost. You're raising the house two feet. You have to meet current code. The big thing about raising the free board is, is going to be when people hit substantial improvement.
Does, does FEMA dictate that percentage?
No, um, we don't have any free board required. It's all.
No, 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 the, the percentage.
Yes, fifty percent.
So, so we can't work around that.
We can raise it, but we can't lower it.
Oh, so we can raise it, but that's the direction you'd like to go perhaps.
We could, I, I mean, uh, well, I'm sorry, if the goal was to say. Percentage, so it's a percentage and we're talking dollars. We can make it stricter. We can't make it more lean.
Okay, I was going to make it.
Yeah.
Cause to me, I, I, you know, and say going forward. New buildings impose a higher free board. Don't, but, 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 but do that in such a way that it doesn't bite people around it, just take home who want to do some remodel.
At the substantial improvement.
Yeah.
So that's, I think that's more of a code issue.
Well, it is. I agree.
And this is the seemingly never ending argument. The comp plan sets out goals. They, they should trapes all the way over to code and be codified. So that they're, they're copacetic. But if certain camps that say, no, you still, if that's a goal that you want to achieve in the future, you may not be able to get there yet. So don't be confused about what the code says and what the comp plan desires. That's, that's, that doesn't give a lot of surety, but it's still, I think that's the principle of the company.
The way I think about it is if we said discouraged development, then one of the outcomes of that might be somewhere down the line. We might look at some of the code suggestions that Jason suggested to reduce flood risks, increase the free board or. More setback for the, for the special hazard area. Those would be the outcomes of saying we want to discourage development in, in the flood. Yeah, eventually we'd get some coaching.
So there, there would be now. So I think that's.
Yeah.
Anyway, we should go. A neighbor came in, proposed development in the flood plain away. And he said, hey, it says in the complaint that discouraged development. Well, then the description is going to be by this, 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 this is what actually discourages it. They're, they're going to argue, well, it's rich.
Well, and.
That's coming down.
That's fair, but, but the changes that were, that Jason recommended are all things that. Do reduce the risk to the guy who builds a net station. That adds cost to his project, but they do reduce the risk.
And still allows them to get blood insurance.
Right.
And it will, and some of those will also reduce blood insurance costs.
Right, because you've done the things that would.
So Jason, you, you talk about engineering costs and we've certainly over the years worked through some of those engineering costs and those can differ. And um, I guess my concern is that. Somebody buying a lot out there, five acres and paying, paying three hundred thousand or five hundred thousand isn't, don't care about cost. I, I feel like we as a commission have a responsibility to the people of Bonner County to. You know, dig into their pockets to find a way to make it fair. So if we. If we follow some of your recommendations, it will make it more expensive. But that means that, that the little guy gets hurt and Mr. Moneybags just moves forward with writing another check.
Possibly.
That is the whole argument. Okay. Yeah, at some point, we're going to, we're going to look at the whole. Floodplain issue again. Because people are, for instance, setback, a forty foot setback from water's edge and so forth. That's going to be looked at because people are, are really harking on. We need to stay away from our water bodies. We need to pull back, you know, so this is a direct opposition to that, building in the floodway. Because you can't help but, you know, be in that environment. And people are, and I think this is going to be very controversial. I, I can see both, both sides of the argument with what's been proposed to prohibit prohibiting. But uh discouraging softens it and that camp is going to go. Well, at least it, discouraging leads it to the code. Make better.
Yeah, yeah. But it, it's much, it's obviously softer than prohibiting.
Well, yeah, but it creates some other, some other. Okay, so. Uh, any other questions of Jason? Thank you very much. Uh, I, I would suggest that we change the. Now into discussion period here. Yeah. All right, so this is a, this is a continued hearing from August thirtieth, um, which we were. Like to consider recommending the goals, objectives and policies. Uh, I think you should go ahead and do that, perhaps just with the one change. One thing. On this floodway issue. So are we okay to make that change tonight and make a recommendation, make that change? Yeah, and I, I understand that, uh, what we would be doing is. We would be um. Recommending goals, well, tell me. So I understand we do recommend the goals and policies. Goals, objectives and policies. As of July nineteenth with the changes through. Nine twenty. Okay. And do we have, is there the discussion about that or do we have a motion? That would do that? I think the motion. I, I don't know if the motion on the thirtieth is adequate, but.
Well, I, I actually, Chair, I want you to, and look at it again, and I did enough of a couple. Medical changes that I think obviously be made and then. Also in there, they, they use uh community and county. Kind of interchangeable, but there's uh two different definitions.
Where, where are you talking about?
Land use talks about community uh in the goals. Next to that, county instead of community.
Well, you know, it's not going to be perfect. No matter how many times we look at it.
But that was just a question actually came up in seventh grade. Saw that and said. Which one works? And same thing, you came up with water. Use waterways, definition of water, I don't think it's hard.
Well, we got some discussion.
Yeah.
Where's, where? Where again, I've been. Where are they? Where are they counting?
Land use, it's land use goal. Bonner County intends to balance and integrate its land use policies and proposals, land use map with the components of the comprehensive plan. To enable the community to grow while retaining its rural character.
Well, I think that's fine.
Yeah, I don't think that creates any confusion.
Yeah, that was mostly a mathematical.
Were we playing that on Dave? Dave was supposed to catch all of us.
Well, I think you did, maybe we went back and changed.
Which one of these is the last one? They all say July nineteen. This August thirty-one, is that the last one?
Yeah.
No, it's not the last one. No, this, these don't have a. These don't have Dave's changes. So. How do we avoid going through every single one of these? I guess we have to go to. Okay, here it is.
This is the one I was looking at was in the year's five.
All right. So, yeah, I, I, I don't think that's something we need to change. What, what else? Anything else?
You know, even when we just changed that one, the second bullet, residential, commercial, industrial, the whole floodway. Will be discouraged. Bill written in this blood plane will be discouraged.
Okay, so. If there's no other changes, then. And we entertain a motion from somebody. Where's the staff?
I think we can incorporate the change in the motions. Recommend this movement. Recommend approval of workers for land use as a, as modified on nine twenty.
Okay, here this. Yeah, so if you go back to August thirtieth, then go into the application, then you go to the staff report, there is a motion to recommend adoption. And since I can't do that, yeah, somebody else has to. I've been disenfranchised.
You made a motion, but you didn't vote that.
Are we looking for a motion for acceptance and submit?
A motion to recommend adoption. Yes, but you can, you can say as amended on up through today. Well, it, that actually the motion says. As amended in this hearing. I, I would, so there's no confusion. I would say as amended through September twentieth. Twenty twenty-two. Since you've had numerous hearings. Boy, crickets here.
Well, I'm, I'm not, I would make the motion, but I'm not sure what we, what the right is here.
What the what?
I'm not sure what the verdict is here. I'd like to make a motion to.
Okay, well, you have to, you have to go back to the staff report from August thirty. August thirty. Okay, uh. Okay. So I'll make a motion. All right, all right.
Go ahead.
I move to recommend that the board of county commissioners adopted of the updated goals, objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan. As presented or as amended through the hearings through September twentieth. Two thousand twenty-two. Finding that it is in accord with the Idaho State Code, as enumerated in the following findings of fact and conclusions of law. Based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at these hearings. For the move to adopt to follow findings of fact and conclusion, the law is written, the action is not resulted in the taking of private property. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. All those in favor? I. Both.
I, that's, that's as you, one of both.
Oh, Wayne?
Yes.
All right, so we did that by golly. So let's. So that would, that, that's uh. That concludes the public hearing. Um, and we'll move to the comprehensive plan. Uh, we, I don't know what we're going to do here. Jake, you want to tell us?
Sure, I mean, because of a brief discussion. It was noted over the weekend, this, we noticed incorrectly on this agenda, the two components we had planned to renew tonight, right? We said, uh, we got legal involved, they got their opinion on it. And came back that because we're within the forty-eight hour window, that we couldn't amend this agenda, given that it's not. Doesn't mean some provision, so. So we can discuss the two that were noticed on the agenda, which are natural resources, school facilities and transportation, but I think we covered those last time. We could add what was proposed for tonight onto the next agenda. We could add another meeting between now and then, if the commission wants to, um. But that's kind of where we're at with this specific discussion.
Well, we did not, we, we have not reviewed natural resources and school facilities. That's not until the.
Oh, no, no.
Well, the fourth is the school and the, and natural resources and the eighteenth is transportation and. But. I, we're, we're, I think we're, we're confusing two things. We have the presentation that each one of us has, we're going to prepare about presenting. A, a pure update to the existing language in the comp plan for each component and, and maybe even goals. Aside from that, there's just ongoing kind of information discussions about. You know, like for instance, what I've got to add to the picture tonight, just as information for the commission to hear about. What I found from schools and what I found from natural resources. So they're not to go over the language or, or anything like that. It's just. Ongoing discussion. It's a workshop. So. That's what's on the agenda. Unfortunately, it's not the other ones that, that we had. We have here September twentieth. Special areas in community design, that was supposed to be tonight, but we didn't get it. Well, it's more than that. It's more than that. This is the problem because. We haven't finalized property rights and recreation.
That's all we did.
No, we didn't finalize. I mean, I, I went back and made some changes on, on property rights. There's been some changes to recreation, at least when we formatted it. And that sort of thing, and it, it shouldn't take a lot of time to discuss those, but they need to be discussed. And then we need to basically. Decide whether we're going to set a hearing on those, on, on these components as we go along, which is what I would like to do. Um, and that would, yeah, but, but this is, the problem is, is that. We now have. We're just backing up on each other. So we, we're going to, the next, next meeting, we're going to have community design. We're going to have property rights, we're going to have recreation, we're going to have special areas, and we're going to have what was, what was scheduled for that. For that, uh, for that night. And, and that's going to, it's going to start to get unimaginable. So we got to get some of these things done. And recommend, I, I understand we can't do it tonight. Um, but. So we can't allow this to happen again because it's just going to be, it's going to be a, a mess.
As far as the, the timeline of these updates go, I've seen or heard two different schools of thought. And I think that might be where some confusion lies on this commission, right? There's an idea to update. That might be where some confusion lies on this commission, right? There's an idea to update these components. Hold hearings for those updates and send them to the board for adoption. Right, components at a time, one, two, three components at a time, right? So there's that idea, and I can see the merits and demerits of each of their of that idea, right? Um, given kind of some overlap on some of these components, at one effect or another, we might have to go back and re-adopt or redo some changes and hold more hearings. The other disadvantage of proposing is gonna it's gonna slow down the the schedule in the sense that we're gonna hold a bunch of different hearings. Rather than one hearing with the end, right? So we're gonna hold hearings and then workshops and meetings and workshops. So I think it'll kind of bog down or tighten our schedule, and you might have to shift some of these some of these component reviews to the right given some hearings, right? So also, the the on the plus side of that idea, the board sees progress, right? They see that we're making some changes. Um, they don't get a whole giant document once to look at and review, they get component at a time, they can kind of digest some of that and adopt it as necessary or as as it's. There's some the benefits and downsides of that idea. The other the other option on this is to review all the components. And then adopt those components as an appendix, and then make the implementation the comp plan. I think this was presented back in April, May, um, as an idea, right? So that when we get additional information, we don't have to amend the comp plan each time, we're admitting the appendix to the comp plan as those components. And then we review, we can set a schedule for every three to five years to review those both policies and objectives as the comp plan and make updates to that. So the benefits of that is we can review all these components, and as they overlap and overlay, we can, you know, adjust. Um, data or, you know, adjust each component based on data releases. The other benefit to this would be, uh, we take it to the community as a whole document. Um, we've had some requests to do a lot more community involvement. I think as a community sees the entire documents, um. It's gonna be long hearings, they're gonna ask a lot of questions, but I think they can see this as a as a whole, so.
Yeah, but that's but that's a good reason to to do it. You know, I I two or three components at a time. So you you've got, you know, we had the experience of going through each component in a very long hearing. That took, you know, hours. And and we're gonna do the same thing, if we're gonna do that with the with the with the text, so. It just seems to me that it makes a lot more sense. It's gonna be, if you're worried about public input, it's gonna be much more focused public input, we do it a component at a time. Uh, rather than rather than, you know, do the whole document. And I'm not sure I understand your reference to appendices. What I thought we were going to do is, what what's been done with the recreation component is that, uh. All of the information regarding campgrounds and beaches and trails and all that kind of stuff is in an appendix. And that's the way, I mean, I would I would urge the commission to look at, look at the recreation component as it exists now. Um, and see if that's what we want to do, as opposed to. I mean, I'm not even sure what you what, how how you were describing that, I don't know. What's gonna be in the appendix?
The entire text from the company?
The entire text is appendix to what?
To the comprehensive plan, to the entire comprehensive plan, the governing document will be the implementation section.
So there's a perspective, which I think, if you go back to what Milton presented to us back in May, when we started this. His proposal was the implementation section is the main body of the document, if you will, and his proposal, which it doesn't work. As I thought about it, but was there would be, I guess, six appendices, he originally proposed the existing comp plan. Which you then go begin to update, and the five sub area plans, each in their own appendix. It doesn't work because there's conflicts between those.
I wasn't gonna bring.
So so that that won't work. Um, but I could see an approach where. The implementation section that we've just done here is the main body, and all of these elements that we're gonna go work on are each in an appendix. So all of that stuff's in the appendix, and the the implementation section becomes, if you will, the operative. Part of the comp plan that drives code and all that other stuff. And and what's in the appendices is is ideally the background that drove the creation of the goals, objectives and policies. Um, I I kinda like that idea. From an organizational perspective, um. Because it does really, but right now, the way it's the way the current plan is written, I feel like the implementation section almost gets lost, it's. Um, but this would make make it so it's much more of the prime focus.
So the implementation uh, section is contained to goals, policies.
Right, right.
Objectives, so. And then so what what would you? Uh, so then these various, the text of these various components. Um. So would that actually be part of the comp plan or?
Yes, but they would they would be in it contained in. In either an appendix or appendices, I don't have strong feelings about whether each one is an appendix or whether it's one big appendix, but they would be an appendix to the comp plan. Yeah, so it's similar to what. Milton's original proposal was, but. But different, because we're gonna actually go update the text.
Um, so would we, so then, under that theory, are you saying that we wouldn't, we wouldn't submit any of these things to the board until the entire thing was done?
So I think that's still a separate discussion, and my own opinion is, I I I would personally. I would wait, I would do the whole thing all at once. In terms of finishing it, because I think there are interrelationships between enough of the elements that I would wait till they're all done, so we can resolve all those. And quite honestly, my opinion is, when we get through with that process. We ought to take another quick pass through goals, objectives and policies, because we may discover through writing these. Although it's whatever they are, that there's some things we want to tweak. In the goals, objectives and policies, because frankly, we're doing this backwards, right? And and we're doing it backwards with the idea that we want to get the new goals, policies and objectives out there. More quickly, because we have all the background of, I think, my my way of thinking about it, it's the five sub area plans, right? And and in terms of your concern. About time and and hearings and public input, Alan, I what I would recommend is we can do. Workshops with public comment along the way, which I think, once we kind of figured out how to do that, that became quite productive. With the goals, policies and objectives.
I agree.
And then, once you get the whole thing done, and we have a a final draft, if you will, then we can have the formal hearings with public comment, we're gonna have to do public comment then. But hopefully, if we accommodated the public comment through the workshop process, as as we work our way through all the elements. We will have a whole bunch of a new public comment, we'll we'll have, we'll have heard what they had to say and. Either thought they were good ideas and wrote them into the text, or thought they were ideas and not, and. I I think that would be a workable way to do this. Um, I I'll say, I think I said it when we put this up, I don't think the schedule is achievable. And we're already finding out that it's probably achievable, I didn't think it ever was achievable. Um, but nevertheless, we ought to work through it as expeditiously as we can, because we need the backup to this, in my opinion. We need we need to get all that done, so we got the backup for this that we just passed.
Well, whether the schedule is achievable or not, um, certainly, we we're gonna be able to do. Various components of the appendix, I guess. Um. We're gonna be able to get that done.
Yeah, I I agree. So I I kind of think of a process where. We have some workshops on on, um. And we can do it to a to a meeting or whatever we want to do. My my preference would be to get a draft of. Um, some of these elements done in a workshop. Without public comment, because I think to get an initial draft, it's best if we if we just focus on that and write it ourselves. Then the public has something to comment on, they're not just commenting on thin air, well, I don't know what you're you're writing yet. So once we have a draft, then we can have a workshop where we accept public comment on the elements that we've written, that we have drafts for. We can update them as as necessary. And work our way through the whole document that way, and then at the end, when we have a final draft. Then we have a hearing and and have, again, there'll be another public comment, and it'll be, it'll be a long meeting or meetings, if you prefer the one, I don't know. But that's just the nature of the beast, I think. I don't know if there's any way to avoid that. And we shouldn't try, but honest.
Well, yeah, no, I agree with that. All right, so.
I'm wondering.
It seemed like a workable process.
Are you thinking of doing workshops every couple, every couple?
With the public, what do you mean? Yes.
What did you?
Maybe not every meeting, I I don't know, we have to have to think about the schedule, but in my mind, no, we may, we may have, we may have a couple of meetings where we're working on elements on our own. Getting that first draft done, and then when we say, okay, we have two or three or four of them done, put them out for public comment, have a workshop. With the appropriate noticing requirements having been met and so forth, have a workshop where we take public comment on those drafts.
Okay, so for instance, we did, uh. Last meeting, we did property rights and recreation, recreation, and then on your, all of your suggestions, Alan and I went back and. Changed those to the point where I know I'm happy with recreation. So it seems to me, at what point are we? Gonna consider ourselves done with those two and either solicit a public comment or, I mean, I I how much discussion are we gonna have to have about this chapter?
I think it's gonna vary based on the content of the chapter, quite honestly, but I I would guess that those two were probably ready. To to put out as drafts for public comment at at some future workshop where we're gonna allow public on on those two elements.
I agree with you. So ideally, what I would have liked to have seen in our agenda tonight and when. Um, I I I did my things with the recreation, but I don't know how to post them, so I had to be at Alan's house so that he can post for me. So he and I were looking at the agenda over the weekend, and it was like, what? Natural resources, I don't think so, and you know, we're thumbing through paper. So what I would have liked to have seen for tonight's agenda ideally would have been. Finalizing property rights and recreation, so we could have submitted to you guys what what we both did, and then the appropriate. Chapter or whatever was assigned for tonight, so we've got a double snap move going here.
Yeah.
So I can see that one night we discussed a chapter, and then it was the head of the the agenda the next week to go back over it and hopefully say, yeah, we all like it. Now let's and and so how many chapters do we do before we say, okay, let's have a workshop on these two or these four, or do we just decide that as we go?
Or or even, to me, a more basic question is, how many times do we need to look at it ourselves before we put it out as a draft that's. We're gonna put out the public?
I don't know, I personally think that we spent so many meetings going over the goals and policies and. Uh, uh. Objectives, goals, objectives and policies. Um, it just, I I mean, shall, should, now. Wayne's bringing up that there's some grammatical errors, it's like, my gosh, I I make it stop. At some point. We have to stop. Or or I can see this going on for two or three years. From what I'm hearing, well, we're gonna talk about these components for a couple of meetings, a couple of meetings is a month and a half.
Well.
And then we're gonna have workshops, and then we're gonna talk about it some more, all of a sudden, we're talking about. Two months per component.
So getting the answer I was hoping to elicit was to, for those two that we discussed last time, that you guys have reworked based on our our own comments.
Yes.
That those are ready for, without any further discussion amongst us, those are ready to put out as drafts for public on that at a future workshop.
I think.
We don't have.
They are, but you guys haven't.
Let's uh, I think what we need.
Well, we can't do that tonight, because it's not on the agenda.
I need to say that, but I think what we're talking about is, uh, what's the process we're gonna define to?
And that's why I think the logical process, if we have one or two. Components. Each not each meeting, but before we do those two new components, we go back to the ones from the meeting before and say, okay. Are we finalized? Are we happy with the changes the person made on them on our suggestion?
With with or without public comment at that point?
Well, we have with public comment.
Okay, now, that's what I, that's the answer I was hoping. With public comment.
Well, I thought, do we start allowing public comment the night we're talking about that component?
I think.
When we're done with our discussion, do we say, is there some public comment on this component, and then have we satisfied the public comment on it?
So you're prob, are you discussing a hearing, of which you would then make a recommendation to send the board for adoption? So I'm asking Debbie. But I think there's some confusion as to a public comment that would move forward or a hearing and should be sent forward for adoption.
Yes, and do we have to do both for every component? Is that required?
Let's let's rewind slightly, right? I don't want to backstep. I think we need to decide it, so I'm fully on board with this is the commission's update, where staff is here to help implement, gather data, whatnot, right? So how would the commission like to move forward on adopting either component by component? Sending it to the board for adoption, or adopt or working through the into all the components and sending it to the board as a package? Let's, I think we need to figure that one out before we move on.
Do we take a vote on that? I I agree with the first one, when Alan said that he preferred the first one, I prefer the first one, because I think it's gonna be. Overwhelming for us if we keep circling back between, oh, wait a minute, we should have put this comment in here, oh, no, we need to circle back, I think that could get absolutely. Very frustrating, and then when I think we start doing workshops with the public, and they start circling back, and then ultimately going to the. Commissioners, I think it could be overwhelming for who, whatever set of commissioners ends up getting that document. I myself would like to see us go through the process, maybe two to four components at a time. Is that an answer to your question?
That's your answer to the question.
Right.
But.
Is that what you were looking for, is?
Yes.
That type of answer?
I don't know if you want to run this like off motions chair, or if you want to just have a discussion on it, and I guess we can, it's like a workshop, so.
Yeah, my answer is, let's do them all and then send one package to them.
Okay, that would be my vote too, I think.
I'm leaning that way too. I, now, as far as the interaction between among the components. For the most part, there's there's a couple of them where the same subject is is presented or or listed as a analysis section, but. The main interaction is gonna be, most of these are gonna inform the land use component. So there's where the interaction comes in. So the way we've got it set up, we talked about all these individual components first, and then. We've got that knowledge together, uh, as our opinion, and our rec, not a recommendation yet, but our opinion. Uh, and our conclusion on each component, what the data says. Then we look at land use and say, well, remember, housing has said this, and the population said this, and those are gonna become the goals in. In land use. And maybe they'll inform the land use description. Uh, in the document, so. So I, it does seem to be, it's an altogether thing. Granted, that's gonna take time. It's going to take time, but if we have. As we started, two components, we looked at them, somebody critiqued it, we brought it to the commission, we did it. It would have been nice if we'd have said, okay, we all agree, we're in agreement, so far, this is what's happened with that. Set it on the table, it's already there, then we take up some more, so it's just a working it through. When we get four components done, sure, put, open that up to a workshop with public comments, say, here's what we're thinking on this. Do you have anything? Did we miss something? Do you want to do it? And then we'll we'll, uh, judge that comment, and at the the next meeting. You know, because then we have to incorporate, if we heard anything, if we really saw some merit in what somebody was saying. We will then incorporate that in our thing and get it ready to make a recommendation, but again, put it on the, on the table, on a pile of them. To be then taken into account with the land use. I think the public hearing on. On all of the components together. Is totally unthinkable. I just I just don't see it, I don't see that as accomplishing anything.
Couldn't we have a public, uh, open up to the public once a month? Take the first meeting every month?
Well, then, we did that, and why don't we just, we just do component by?
Yeah.
Just do component by component.
But we don't have to send it off until we get everything done.
Why not? Why not send it on? You know, there 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 are maybe.
Change to it in there.
Well, there shouldn't be change to it, you know.
There will be, there will be.
There will be. I, yeah, I think so, well, you know, if I think we need to admit, and what we ought to do is identify those. Components that we think are really kind of dependent on each other, and maybe, you know, w- we do those last. But property rights, yeah, our property rights and, uh, recreation is recreation, you know?
I think most of them.
And community design is, who knows what, um. Um. So.
Natural resources, excuse, na- natural resources does have a couple of the same. Uh, listed criteria as some of the other.
Alright, the schools.
These doesn't. Hazardous areas doesn't.
The transportation's in there.
Well, that's school transportation, not overall transportation. Do them one down below transportation.
Right, 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 right.
So it's busing we're talking about. And boy, there's some deep subjects there.
Mostly yellow.
Yeah, they're very yellow. I think what we're seeing here tonight. Is, is indicative. That what would happen? If we, if we had adequate workshops for public comment along the way, that we won't have a huge. Hearing. When we come to do a hearing on the whole thing. Right, we had.
Yeah.
Well, we had workshops where we had a lot of public comment, some were long meetings, some shorter, but when, when now. When it comes time to, about the whole thing.
He's always here.
Because we had the public comment along the way, I think. So it's not.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I agree that. Yeah, the public, we need to have a public comment, because I think we, we did a lot of. Uh, bridge making sort of.
Yes.
In those, in those public comments that we had.
Granted, it was only, what, fifteen people at most here, but still.
And we always.
But there were some good suggestions.
Oh, there were.
But, and. And even for math.
Adoption to make a recommendation to the board hearing. Will still get comments. And we'll get the people that said, what are you, what are you doing? We haven't even heard about this until yesterday, when my neighbor said it's gonna be a hearing. We'll always get them.
Yeah.
That's just part of what we are.
So I, I don't think it's a, I don't think. It's, I don't anticipate that it would be an unworkable. Set of hearings though, assuming that we've. We've allowed the, the public comment along the way through a series of workshops.
So how often do we allow that? Every two components, every four?
Well, again.
Every not, every meeting?
Again, my, my. My thought, and he pay is. Give them something to comment on. Don't just say, we're gonna be looking for the first time at a draft of transportation or whatever it might be. We want your book, give them a draft that we've worked on and we put a reasonable amount of effort into. For example, the two we talked about last time, I think.
Right.
I, I don't, I don't personally, when, when you guys, whoever it is, or the author is, goes away and incorporates the comments from the group. I don't think I need to look at that before we put it out for public. It's not a final, it's still a, a first draft or whatever you wanna call it. Get it out for public comment and then, and then we can have another discussion about it. After we've heard the public comment. And finalize it hopefully in one fairly quick discussion.
So that's what I was trying to say.
And then put that on the shelf. Until we work our way through the whole thing.
So that's what I was trying to say. Ideally, the schedule tonight would have said. Public comment on recreation and property rights. And then the.
Our first cut at the other two.
And then the next one would say, public comment on that one, would we, after public comment, will we have to go back a third time and. And visit property rights and recreation? After we bring public comment?
If you wanna send it to the board, we need to schedule a hearing. That's what I was getting.
Then it would be the whole.
Well, so we're still, so we still haven't answered the question. No. I think there's three and three. So right now it's a split. You don't have a seventh person. You'll have one.
But Josh didn't say. What did you say? Josh. Yeah, alright, so, I know.
I, I mean, I, my, my. My experience with the subrare committees is that. Uh, we talk about it and then. Go away from it, come back, and then we talk about the same thing again. And that there's some, some real efficiency in. Let's go through it, let's, let's look at it, let's get it where we want it. And then let's go on and be done with it and put it away. Um. And.
You mean make a recommendation.
Make a recommendation, we need to be done.
I don't, I don't think you have to, my, my. Approach would be, I don't think you need to recommend it to the board to put it away. We can have a vote and say, we're done with it, I'm putting it on the shelf until we're done with the other twelve.
Yeah, but I, I think that's what keeps us on the merry-go-round.
Yeah.
And, and we never get off.
But it also, it's also what allows you to create at the end of the day, a document that's appearing.
Okay, but in what, what, what? Things do we put in place that, that set deadlines or timelines? Or, hey, we're only gonna take it off the shelf three times and that's it. But we can't take it off, put it on. That's why we've been working on a comprehensive plan for. Five, going on six years, because we'll just stay on the merry-go-round. Talk about it, we talk about it, we talk about it, but let's. Get it done.
We had our workshop on the goals, objectives and policies, what, four meetings ago, three meetings ago? And, and we're still talking about the grammar in it and we're still going around and around about it?
So I, I agree that there is some. Efficiency and the ability to, to, to put out a, a more following product, if we put it on the shelf, spend some time thinking about it. I mean, take it down and work on it and put it on the shelves and spend some time working on it, but. There has to be a. Uh. We're done. And how do we get there? How do we, like, the schedule, I thought was a way to, to keep us moving along and on track. And with a timeline to. Accomplish something. I mean, I, in, in my business, in my life, I'm task oriented. I'm, I'm not flagging hours, not just punching the clock. I am task oriented. How fast can I complete this task so I can get to the next, next task? And so that's kind of my mindset here is. Okay, if the task is gonna take three meetings, then alright, that's it, but, but then let's. Wherever we're at and we get it done, then let's get done with it and move on to the next task.
Well, I think that's what we're all saying, is just. Let's move on. We don't need to send it up to get. To the commissioners until we get down to the land use part of it.
I think that's the thing, is that there's this idea that. It has to be perfect when we send it up there. But we're gonna send up a recommendation and they're gonna say, I wanna change this, I wanna change that, let's look, relook at this, change that. And they're gonna kick it out or kick it back. So we can go around and around it, throw it to them, we think it's awesome, and they say, I don't like this, I don't like that, let's make some changes. So I think. Kicking it up to ones. With some kind of a timeline.
But then we're gonna go change it and get to the next.
Wouldn't it be more efficient to be changing small portions of it at a time? I mean, I'd rather, I'd rather send. A, a couple of components up at a time so that if they send it back, it's a little more manageable.
Jake, how do you, how do you see the commissioners taking those recommendations? I mean, with their timeline, their schedule. Do they want to have more meetings? Do they wanna see them all at once?
This would be on the.
We, we already have regularly scheduled hearings to the board, so we need to add it to those agendas.
Yeah.
Um. So it could go up in small chunks without adding more meetings to their schedule.
That, that being said. I'm trying to think, there, there would be some timeline lighting on, on updating, it's like the noticing requirements for hearings, right?
Right.
We, we have to notice it from you guys to, to hear it. We'd have to notice it again for the board to hear it, so. I, I actually think you would find that's horrible for our schedule. Because we're gonna be working through a schedule of something like this, and all of a sudden, we're gonna get something kicked back to us. Now we gotta.
Yeah.
I'm not saying.
I think that'd be horrible for our schedule.
But that's why we're having these conversations.
The whole thing.
Cause there's ideas and then there's execution. So let's talk about the ideas and then let's talk about the execution. It might be a good idea. But the logistics.
So are you gonna tell them?
No.
Oh, okay, so the couple things.
So, so let me, let me make. So, um. Let's go over the ground rules. What is the health requirement? Because we've had several different iterations of that.
Twenty-two days. Fifteen days, but we add seven days for.
Why do you need seven minutes?
To prepare the relations and support.
Yeah.
That's for the public. Yes, we're hearing.
Here, for the year, yeah.
It's, it's interesting, when we came up with that schedule, it's on the board. That doesn't, there's nothing in there about. Uh. You know, how that's to be conducted. We came up with those. So this day we're gonna do this, this day we're gonna do this. What, what did we think we were even accomplish at those dates? On October fourth.
I'll tell you what I, I'll tell you what I thought. I'll tell you what I thought. I thought we were gonna do. Um, the components that are listed on those various dates. And we were, that each person's gonna be responsible to draft it as best they could, or redraft it.
Yeah.
And then we would have a discussion like we did last time and a couple of changes here and there. Um, and then, you know, we would, we would approve it. And then we.
On that date.
It would, it would then, no, not on that date, I was just making some support meeting.
Because that's, that's what's missing on.
There's no hearing dates.
Yeah, no, but.
It's not even a decision date. It's just, here's a presentation on, on somebody.
Yeah, right, so, but no, well, I don't know if it's. So, it's, it's, it depends if it's not, if, if we don't get the agenda right, it's not gonna be achievable for sure.
That part aside. Um, I don't know that we thought that through enough to think of these ramifications. Okay, we, somebody presents their work on, on October nineteenth. Or something, and then what? We can discuss it. There could be some changes that somebody else voted about this, oh, okay. Uh, inevitably, we're gonna bring that up again, either to. Finalize our work on that and then do something with it, but finalize it on a subsequent date. So we need to, if anything. Had the rest of those dates with, okay. Uh, two weeks later, four weeks later or something, we're gonna then make a final decision or upon final decision.
I don't, I don't see it, I don't see it as that much different than, than what we did for the goals, objectives and policies. I mean, that's what we did.
Yeah, through them for. What, four, four meetings, three meetings?
I think the way we did that, I mean, you, you did several workshops in which you reviewed the entire document, right? And then we did, what? Three, three workshops with public input.
Right.
Right, and at the end, we, we created a final document. There was some kind of back and forth and. We finally got the final version of it and we came back to that, right? So if you think that process has merit, we wanna follow that similar idea, we could. If you want to. Like I said, I, I'm not partial one way or the other. I see the benefits and downside of both of these. I can see holding extra public hearings being a little bit more of a administrative burden on our side. Rather than just publishing the agenda. Per twelve dash two six eight, there is a twenty-two day. Limit or requirement to send out to agencies, right? Um, and that's for all applications. It doesn't specific, specifically call out, you know, subdivisions or variances or whatever. It's just, it's a. Chapter two is all of our procedures. So that's where that, the twenty-two.
Which, which section is that?
It's twelve dash two six eight. Which is application process, general provisions, then under D. Right?
The other thing that I've looked at time and time again. You know, we reach reviewing a component, so we pull up the original component. Well, each one of those has induction date on it. They were all adopted as components. By the board. In two thousand two. Except for. The land use component. Which was adopted December thirteen, two thousand five. So a lot of work was done, but it was all done first, and then all of that informed, then, then. The two-year period was to, to make up the land use component. So that's a model.
Land use component is.
Is, is what drives.
Land use component for the pre, for the cop, that, that, is it a cop plan? It's, it's probably not.
No, but it then worked into the implementation component. That's where all those boiled together. That's how the, the staff and the commission interpreted the state code at that time. I don't agree with it, but that's how it was done. And I can see the merit to what they did. But anyway, so. That's by, based on that schedule. Since then, in two thousand thirteen, there was, there were one, two, three. Three, four, four components, property rights, agriculture, population and schools. Which are updated in two thousand thirteen because. Conditions have changed. We just come out of recession. Building was happening again, building was happening again, so what, what's updated? That was two, the rest of them weren't. Recreation, hazardous areas, special areas, economics. Uh, trans, even trends, or transportation. Uh, public services. And the implementation component, they were not changed in two thousand two.
Alright, so, look, we're not gonna, we're not gonna agree, obviously, uh, cause we don't agree, so. Let's talk about. Um. Moving forward with the workshops and, and the components as we are, and we'll, 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 we'll address this again to a better time.
I would really like to figure this out, cause.
Well, we can't figure it out yet, cause it's three, three.
Pretty good of a schedule on this, it's. Kind of, I think.
I, I understand, but we, I can't help it. You got three, three. So, we're not gonna decide that tonight. What I think we ought to do is we ought to go forward. We, we've got components that have been worked on. Uh, we've only reviewed. As a commission too. Um, and, uh. And those might be ready to go, but. I, I have some, I have some format questions, which I. I, I think not, talk about any specific component, well, maybe. But I think it's format. Alright, so if you look at the current conflict. And they're not consistent with this, but different elements or different components. They have the goals, objectives and policies in. On the recreation component and the, and the property rights. That's what, that's what, that's what I did. I did, I did that on, on property rights. And I did, and it's also on recreation. I know we did not do that. On his. Uh, that special area. So, uh. That's something that I think we should try to consistently on. That's what we're gonna do then, that's fine. That's the way it was. There's also some discussion about. Uh, on, for instance, recreation. And I think it also applies to special areas. Uh, we're, we're really the Texas champ, it's. You had a, you had a tour guide. So. There was a discussion about maybe a pen, so that's another dependence. So we're gonna have an appendix, which is all of them. And then we're gonna have an appendix that's just something. You know. And there's a change frequently, you know, like fishing licenses. Uh. And that just.
What land use.
That's what was it. That was, that was right. It was in.
Exactly.
And I, and, 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 darn, I mean, if you look at sixty-five oh eight. It doesn't necessarily have to lead to a language. Could you look at some of the stuff that's in there? Um.
I know, some, some of the criteria, if you will, for analyzing that component.
It's, it's, it's way. So, you know, that there apparently is, was some logic to having, for instance, in the recreation. All those different things, but it needs to be of the text. It's, it's independent. So is that the way we should move forward? Because there's, there's. There's a number of these components, speaking generally. Uh. Now. It hasn't changed. Special variants hasn't changed.
Hazardous.
Hazardous areas hasn't changed. So, I mean, what do you do? I mean, uh. Like, for instance, special areas, I, I think you, you know, I, I would just keep the extent of it is, is just add the goals and policies, yeah. But. I, I don't know whether that's what everybody has in mind.
I guess the way I'm looking at it is. All the analyzing you do to come up with. Your text. Can go into an appendix. Because that's the stuff that changes. That's the stuff that, you know, okay, I'm analyzing population, will population changes?
Population, population.
Yeah, I'm just using that. Some of the ones you'll put in there, you're getting special sites. None of that will change and just be in there, but that's the information that you use.
Now we got an appendix.
Right, well, I think I, I see one of them having those separate.
Well, but it was brought up earlier that our. Goals, objectives and policies was the text and then, uh, or was the. Plan and then all the rest was an appendix. Sure, so now we're having an appendix. To each of that.
You have multiple. But you can do that. If, if, if we're sent, we've sent this out. Which. Uh, we don't, I haven't really been very specific about. What our intention is. Currently. Currently. The implementation section is a separate section. To combine. It's, you know, separates, I forget the number, but it's a separate section of the conflict. Um. We've had a discussion about making it the main body of the conflict. Either way. I don't think it makes sense to repeat. Goals, objectives and policies in the other elements. But to me, that's just. That's gonna create confusion and creates the potential for, yeah, you're saying the same thing in two different areas. How do you make sure you always keep consistent as you go through? Over time and perhaps make changes. So if we're gonna have. This document that we just approved. Either as the main body or as a separate section, the way it is today, I don't think we should be talking about goals, objectives and policies in the general.
That's fine. I, 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 I.
That was your question, I think, right? Cuz some of them just, some of them don't. Today, some of them do, some of them don't.
Right.
And I, you know, think we need to be consistent. If we're gonna be consistent. How about, how about this? So. You collect data. Some level of analysis. What does the data mean? You do the analysis and then that you should be able to draw a conclusion. On that subject. From the analysis. If you put the analysis, you put all the, the data and the analysis. Over in an appendix under that component, but then you state your conclusions. Under the main body of the component. I looked at the data, it says this. And that is gonna lead to. Lead into, maybe not statement, but lead into. Uh, goals and objectives and policy. Make that clear and then. Over in the implementation section, say, here it is for. Uh, creative design, here's the goals, based on whether. Make some tight language, but. That's one way to do it. Sort of repeating or putting the goals in there and then repeating them in. Alright, so we'll take.
Can I make a suggestion? I'm digressing a little bit on what, what we're discussing right now, but. But like we were talking about some of the confidence which are now dependent on each other and won't have a lot of new input. New data that will come into then, can we take those to the board first? And then whatever confidence are dependent on each other, we wait for all of them to get updated together and then take that. As five, six confidence or whatever. Those conferences, so dividing it into half and half.
So you've been talking about redoing this schedule up here.
Uh, well, yes.
Well, I, I, I'll bring up an example. I mean, last week or last meeting, Dave, you said, oh, I don't think we should consider recreation done. Because when we get to economic development, that could circle back. And substantiate recreation. Now, I myself. No offense intended, would have never thought that those two would need to be held back.
Well.
So I think it would be very, I think we could spend a whole nother meeting determining which ones are not going to mesh with each other and which ones are. Because we're gonna have different opinions on that.
So if what you're saying is sometimes hard to predict which two are gonna hit.
Well, yeah.
I think I agree, I agree with you.
Well, I, I wouldn't have thought they would, but you did.
And, and I, and I also am not sure I see the value. O- other than maybe it's a time management thing for the board, but. I, I don't see the value in, in going through and having. Public hearings on half a dozen elements that haven't changed much since last time and sending that up separate. I don't see how it. Benefits. The county in terms of its land use decisions to have half a dozen elements up there and we're still gonna, I mean, the meat of it is frankly, the ones that aren't critical.
That, that's one reason I was. I don't know.
Be dismissive of them, but they're not the ones that really are gonna drive land.
Right, and so the ones that were changed in two thousand thirteen, it's interesting, schools, agriculture, population and property rights. What code changes were made. Subsequent to that, that changed things. I don't, I mean, there have been all along, there's always code changes being made and it's be hard to trace back to. These updated components. Yeah, and but you'd have to stronger than that, you'd say, oh, deep was, that was six months after the conflict was changed, that must have come from a conflict, maybe. You know, if you can trace it like that. So as again. They went through, the county went through the sex site, planning commission went through this exercise in thirteen, update four components. What was the result? That was it. You'd hope that it was some. Positive move ahead. Better or better. The updated. Schools and trans school transportation, agriculture. Population. And property rights. Agriculture, what is that where? Where there, there was no countywide zone change after that to go from Ag ten to Ag twenty or, or whatever. There wasn't. But I don't know. I don't know why, and schools, schools did nothing. It just, it just updated the, the data. But there was no new conclusion.
It's populations in there, so I imagine what they did was they updated the population data. Cuz it was a census in twenty-ten.
Well, yeah, but it didn't result in anything.
Well, I don't know. Did it or did?
Yes, it's an update, but what?
And on property rights, I assume that there was some. Changes in Idaho law.
That was in eighty-three, that was in eighty-three. Yeah, but not the checklist happened, the checklist happened back in eighty-three.
Okay, so that was.
That's when the attorney general was required to do it, that's when he did, but there's some other stuff.
Like, you know, I, I had. I had Bill Wilson. Look at the property rights. Uh, analysis. And he, we came up with the. Free legislation. So I updated. But. You know, there's not gonna be a lot of discussion. It's, no, it is what it is. Why is what it is, so.
But that also means, that's, that's an element that. We should have to sort of, that is concerned, we should be able to. Get some public input as such as it is and look at the updates. And, and like I should say, put it on the shelf and be done with it until we get the other ones done. I don't think there's a need to come back and look at that five words. And so I, I think a solid working schedule, if you look at. This, right? We review two, the first item on the next one is public input on these two components, right? Whether that then leads to a, a hearing where we're gonna adopt those or send them up to the board or not, it's up to you guys to figure out. We're getting public input, make any other modifications, and then the second half, that meeting, do the next two components. The next meeting, public input, so it accomplishes your two ideas of. We need time to work on this without you guys talking to us and here, now's your time for, for public input. If we don't have any public input, then. Move on and keep going, like, but at least we put it on the schedule. And again, the principle is do something on it on.
Sure.
Don't, don't make a comment on Lake Air.
I do that. So could we go back to maybe the little bit of a compromise here to help speed up the schedule? Is. Well, I mean, it's go through there because probably three of those up there. There's no changes, no nothing. I mean, it's gonna be, okay. We're gonna sit down here. Fifteen minutes and we're done. And then there's gonna be some of them that are gonna take two hours. Cuz we knew. A two-hour one with a fifteen-minute one to kind of help.
True, but we have.
How, how would you identify those?
It's, yeah, somewhat, but you can still go back through there and there's things that. Haven't changed. I mean, it's like special areas and sites.
Yeah.
Uh. Hazardous areas.
Community design.
Community design, agriculture. I mean, there's probably some.
Was, it wasn't, there was, there wasn't one. So basically, all we had is goals, objectives and policies. And I have no idea what the next should be, and you'll find that out, but. Uh, now that we're taking out the goals, objectives and policies, it's really short.
Yeah. So. Could that help speed up things so that when we had our meetings there, we would have time for that public input? Then a quick one that we can go through and.
Well, there's natural resources, there's not very many changes in that. It is what it is. Well, there, there, yes.
Yes, there is after studying through some of that.
Because things weren't delved into very deeply at that time. And since then, we've got, we've got state natural resources, people looking into the same thing, being deeper than they ever have. So there are resource and we're finding out from them, that's what I wanted to talk about then.
I would say not dug into deeply. I thought the national resources committed work on that for three years.
That's not the same thing. Their whole thing was. Bonner County saying, you federal government, you're gonna include us in your decision. That was it. In a nutshell. That's what it was like.
That two thousand eighteen policy was never adopted.
No, because it wasn't, it had nothing to do with land use in the county it was. You can't tell, you can't exclude us from coming on your policies and procedures and uses, so. That's what it does. Three years and. Well, the county is, the county adopted it as a policy for dealing with the federal and state down. On federal and state lands. That's what it's about. And nothing to do, right?
Let's. Okay, let's do, let's do this. Why don't we all just take a look at these different components? And I, you know, I, I think, you know, more you read through them, there's, there's just not a lot of change. I mean, they would be, once it dawned on talking about maybe. But. There's not a lot, so I think we, let's, let's try to. Be prepared at the next meeting to discuss. You know, what we think of these components in, in gen, you know, in general, but. Um, but we'll, we'll deal with. Property rights, recreation. With regard to property rights and recreation. We should remove the goals. Of decades.
They better make, everyone agree with that, go forward, pull them out of the components that we had in implementation.
Yeah. How do we put something? You know, the end of our agenda tonight is to figure out the agenda. How do we put something so generic that we're gonna be able to have flexibility?
Everything. I just sent me the bill. Can I put on the agenda, ongoing discussion of component updated? If there's crossover, it's like, oh, this may, may, may affect housing. We can't talk about housing. So I think what we do is say, establish what public comment we're going to receive for. Do we wanna say, we receive public comment on property rights and, and recreation? I'll put that as item number one, and do we? We discussed that already, and then do we? Item two, ongoing discussion, right, component of the year. I'll get Bill's blessing on that to make sure it's. Not too generic, um, and then we could publish this or whatever. What's the licensing requirement on the public comment for workshop?
Yeah, it's just fifteen days.
No, no, agendas, um, is a forty-eight hour minutes.
Okay.
We have to put it out, put it out two days before the, two business days.
Okay.
So.
But usually, but if.
Right, it, it's not a hearing, it's just a workshop.
But so, but effectively. If they only see the notice two, two days ahead of the, of the workshop. And the stuff is online, that, you know, they're gonna rightfully so start about it, because it's, it's not. So, boy. Um.
I'm gonna try to put the document online as soon as I can.
So it, it'd be incumbent on us then, well, I need to discuss one of the components that we get, unless you already say, alright, this is good.
Well, we need to eliminate goals.
Now, we can't get a meeting, so be it. But it's still incumbent on us to get to that point with each discussion about a component, right? So do you work real well? And come in prepared. Uh, to make your case and.
Well, I have another question. This is the mechanic question. Um. Since. None of us are word processors. Um. Is, is anybody gonna go in and kind of adjust, you know?
Oh, some words.
Sure. Not, not change words, but I mean, like.
The layout.
Yeah, the margins are, you know, something. Screwed, screwed up.
She's salaried now, so she'll.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, 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 that would be, that would be really helpful. That would be really helpful if we could do that, that's. It would save, it saved me a lot of times trying to figure out how to do margins on Google Docs and.
Right.
Oh.
We, we can do it. We, we, we can do that.
Have to send it back to my old secretary of California.
No, fix the documents, don't fix the.
You see, you know, you probably have seen.
Yes.
Some of the margin issues.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, it, it obviously needs to be all the same.
Well, alright, well, we beat this to death.
Yes, I have one question for you then. Are you still available to look for data for us? Okay, cuz I was working earlier this afternoon on the list of the data that I think I'd need for economic development agriculture.
Yes, please, please send.
When the next day or two.
And if you give me that list. Uh, of that data in advance and try to welcome us and send back.
Yeah, okay. We'll slip work.
You have.
So what are we doing with our schedule? Are we just moving everything back one meeting?
No. Well. Well, we have to because we, yeah, now we gotta now schedule it, but.
So are we sticking tentatively to this schedule except everything's two weeks behind? Because of tonight?
But this doesn't, this doesn't include. A workshop. Like, for instance, we're gonna have October fourth, we're gonna discuss, let's say we discuss natural resources, schools and come to a decision ourselves on that. We're satisfied with the risk. We then put it on the website and. A subsequent workshop, the public's invited to, so that's not on the schedule.
No, but I think what we.
I know, but that's what I'm saying. We gotta change it.
No, but that, no, no, all this was, this was just to assign. Our different components to people to report on different days. It was not supposed to be an agenda.
Alright, so then.
We're constructing an agenda.
I'm glad you did that because, right? Any written schedule like that is obviously something to change. And we're adding complexity to it now, so. Let's not be constrained by that.
But I think at the end of our workshops, right? We, you, you guys have the resources to decide, okay. We, we've beaten. Economic development, agriculture, we're, we're good, we're final rap, um, next meeting, let's open it to public comment. Right, but if you get to the end of it, it's, you know, eleven o'clock, you guys are exhausted. We need more time. I was still. Last thing, the zoning, a single file. So. You get to the end of it, say, we're good. Well, and then the last item on here, right, and it's talking about what's, what are we? October fourth, twenty-two, twenty-fourth, two agenda items. And we just added a public comment open for this and we'll, we'll advertise it. Rather than.
So are you going to then say? We're, uh, the workshop is going to discuss. These specific items?
I think what we do is, at the beginning, whatever you guys decided previous meeting, right? You say, okay, public meeting on X, Y, Z component. I'll advertise it on, on number one here, the comp plan is public input or public comment on these components. The second item is ongoing discussion of. You know, comprehensive plan, component update. So next meeting would be public comment on property rights and.
Without, without. Specifying the component?
Correct.
Okay. If Bill doesn't make sure, but if Bill doesn't agree, then you'd have to list.
Alright, so this is.
You have to make sure you listed all the components.
This is our own, this is our own timeline for review.
Right.
So basically, you would, you would, you're on the workshop.
It's an hour.
This is not, this is. On the workshop.
No, I'm not gonna, I just wanna do, let's do which one. Publish this, though. So let me, this is a working copy.
Alright, so. So if, if Bill doesn't. Think that's appropriate, then you need to put special areas, creative design, natural resources and school facilities.
Right, whichever part of that we get through is what we get.
Yeah, good.
Four of them on there and then the next time you.
So by next meeting, you'll have another transmission.
Yes.
That's gonna happen as the lead Friday. So we did interviews over here this week as, I'm not late, so, um. Yeah.
We don't get to interview them?
You guys, no.
We don't have to make a recommendation.
You can tell your.
Yeah.
Alright, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm just making a suggestion, so when you go ahead and notice the stuff. Is you're only gonna be accepting public comment on property rights and recreation. And the rest would be not, well, their comments. And in that respect, I don't know why you. Since it would not use, like, not even awesome for public comment anyway on the two, the only separate note stuff. My opinion, probably sort of the fact about it would not.
Yeah. Well, still.
Got my, my hats and slap.
Keep changing it.
Right.
Alright, so, uh. If there's no other comments. Because you were here, well.
So it's now sixteen. Um, no. I, I've got some information on. Natural resources and schools down here, just information. An update.
You're gonna be, you're gonna be giving it to us next time. Alright. Meeting's adjourned. Till. October fourth. Twenty twenty-two. At this address and in this room.